Is the council ready? Good evening. It's a really a pleasure to welcome you to our city council meeting this evening. This is a consolidated agenda. We have not only our Buena Sanitation District and Community Development Commission, as well as the city council. And, as I said, it's a pleasure to have you with us this evening. We'll begin by having a roll call from our city clerk.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to have Senior Pastor Bob Kennedy of the Oak Hills Church here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and offer the invocation. So if you'd please stand and then remain standing for the invocation. Pastor Kennedy.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Truly amazing God, we give you thanks. Before the business of the city is done, we pause and we thank you. We thank you for the city of Vista where we live. We thank you for our leaders, bless them and guide them as they seek to do what's best and what's right. We thank you for all the invisible blessings that we don't see. We thank you for life, for breath, for friends and family. We truly thank you. You're an amazing God. Truly amazing God, give us pure hearts that we may see you, humble hearts that we may hear you, hearts of love that we may serve you, hearts of faith that we may live in you, reverent hearts that we may worship you, here in this place, here in Vista, and in our broader community, through your great love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Kennedy. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
Yes, Mayor, there's one item to be removed, and that is item C-15.
Item C-15, okay. That would be the purchase of 325 South Santa Fe, and that's to be removed from the agenda altogether. Okay? Are there any other items to be removed?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, we did have a closed session prior to the city council meeting where we discussed some legal matters. We'll ask our city attorney to give a report on that session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council met in closed session to discuss the four items listed on today's closed session calendar, items CS-1 through CS-4. CS-1, an item of litigation. CS-2 was labor negotiations, and 3 and 4, real estate. No actions were taken in closed session, and there is nothing further to be reported.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have one presentation this evening, and it gives me a great deal of pleasure to do this, to ask John Aguilera, Bobby Jones, Ron Holloway, and Frank Wilhelm to please come forward to the podium. Okay, it's very, it does give me a great deal of pleasure because the, this is a letter honoring the Amigos de Vista Lions Club, and they've been a part of this community for so many years and have contributed so much to the community. We have here a letter of appreciation that I'd like to read, which tells you a little bit about how grateful we are for everything that you do. It says, "The Amigos de Vista Lions Club is part of the world's largest secular service organization that encompasses over 44,500 clubs and more than 1.4 million members in 203 countries around the world. Over the last 28 years, the Amigos de Vista Lions Club has played a major role in the success of the City of Vista's youth basketball program by donating more than $100,000 for youth scholarships and basketball equipment, and has benefited more than 20,000 children. Recently, when the City of Vista Recreation Division was in need of funding for two projects, the Amigos de Vista Lions Club generously donated $10,000 towards the purchase of an automated basketball system and a new scoreboard. The Lions Club has also volunteered time and energy to the City of Vista Recreation Division by having several of their members sit on the youth basketball board. Currently, Lions Club President Bobby Jones has been on the board for three years, Ron Holloway for seven years, and Frank Wilhelm for 19 years." Wow.
Doesn't look that old.
Doesn't, he really doesn't. "The City of Vista and the Vista City Council appreciate the remarkable job the Lions Club members have done in volunteering their time, efforts, and money to the youth basketball program. The successes they helped achieve are also greatly appreciated by the generations of youth, past, present, and future. In recognition of the Amigos de Vista Lions Club commitment to the community and youth, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council present this letter of appreciation." And it's signed by all members of the city council. Now, who do I present it to?
Our president.
Our president, okay. Would the president like to say a few words?
Well, we're just honored to be a part of the community and to serve in the area that we live in, and I think I speak for everyone in the group that we're very proud to accept this from the city. Thank you.
Sincerely, we really do appreciate everything you do for this community. It's a great deal, man, so thank you, thank you, from all the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's one of the great things we get to do during city council meetings, is to honor those that contribute so much to the community. We now have the consent calendar. There are several items that are listed on the consent calendar. These are items that, these are items that can be handled with one vote by the city council. Are there any items the council wishes to remove from the agenda?
Mayor, 18, please.
Okay, that would be item 18. Are there any others?
That move for adoption, the balance of the consent agenda?
Ms. Ritter want to say something?
Yeah, I was just getting ready to. I want to abstain from item C-7, please.
Okay, she's abstaining from item C-7. Okay, now, Mr. Campbell.
A move for adoption of the balance of the consent agenda?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If you please cast your votes. Okay, and that vote is unanimous for all those items that are on the consent calendar, except item C-18. And so now we'll go ahead and consider item C-18. This is prohibiting tobacco use in city parks, on trails, and outside the Wave Water Park, the Vista Library, and the Civic Center. Mr. Fortmular.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Bill Fortmular, Assistant Director of Public Services, to my right, our management analyst, Don Amister. The proposed ordinances before you tonight, if approved, will expand the smoking prohibition of tobacco and tobacco-related products within the city parks and trails, and clarify where smoking is prohibited outside of the primary community facilities in Vista, which include the Wave Water Park, the library, and the Civic Center. In terms of boundaries for parks and trails, prohibition begins at the interior edge of a sidewalk, not including the sidewalk, which surrounds a city park. For trails, the boundary would be the edge of the trail. Where no sidewalks exist, the boundary will be where it's designated as the park boundary. It might be a fence, it might be the edge of the road, but whatever the designation is. In addition, the city manager may designate specific areas where smoking may be permitted. These areas will be clearly identified with signage and will have receptacles for the disposal of tobacco-related products. For the Civic Center, library, and Wave Water Park, the boundary shall be designated as the interior edge of the public sidewalk, not including the sidewalk adjacent to the public or private streets surrounding the facilities. Also excluded are any on-site parking lots within the boundary of the City Hall complex, library, or the Wave Water Park. Where no public or private street abuts, the boundary shall be designated by a boundary fence. The United States Environmental Protection Agency has classified secondhand smoke as a Class A carcinogen, the most dangerous classification of a carcinogen. The health effects of smoking and secondhand smoke to the residents and visitors of Vista is a concern, as well as keeping our public parks and trails clean, safe, and pleasant for public use. Cigarette butts take approximately 15 years to decompose, and the filters contain toxic chemicals that leach into the aquatic ecosystems. Cigarettes are also a leading cause of fire, death, injury, and property damage. A smoking prohibition will reduce the amount of cigarette litter, reduce fire hazard, improve water quality, and ultimately provide citizens with cleaner, safer, and healthier parks and trails. That's the end of our presentation, and we're prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Campbell, since you removed this item, do you have any comments?
Thank you. Some questions, if I could. We're in a constrained resource and budget time now, and I anticipate that'll last for several years. When we pass an ordinance, then we expect there'll be some form of compliance, and I think that we're already strained on our code enforcement people and park rangers. What forms of enforcement are you proposing in this?
Well, currently in the parks, we have a prohibition of smoking within 50 feet of a tot lot, and there's also state laws within 25 feet of a building. A lot of that has been voluntary compliance. It really hasn't, hasn't been an issue. Or another park patron will say, hey, you know, there's no smoking point to sign. People move out of, out of the area. In terms of within the parks, with the new ordinance expanding it, it could be handled by our park directors as they're moving through the parks, seeing people, and asking them to, you know, refrain, cite them if necessary, but hopefully be voluntary compliance. There will be some costs involved with some signage, but there is a grant available, possible grant available through the San Diego Tobacco Control Project that would help offset the cost of these signs for any of the areas. We anticipate about $500 to be the cost to a proper signage for this ordinance.
Could we consider, after the signage is up, that for a period of, a reasonable period of time, I'll say 60 days, 90 days, for lack of a better number, that we could give warnings rather than citing people? Because I think this is sort of a new thing, and many people may be walking their dog or, or the like may not understand that those signs are even there, because it won't be that prominent in newspapers or publications. Will we put it in the, in the city newsletter? Will we, how, how will we communicate this to the public?
Well, through the, through the city newsletter, through our electronic newsletter that, that our department runs. Any communications we have, we'll put it out there.
Okay.
And we'll notify, you know, the staff in the parks and the park maintenance crew as well, if they see people, just kind of, we can have little handouts to hand to the people, just, by the way, here's the new ordinance. We can accommodate them that way.
I had, had one, and you can clarify it, I'm sure, to everybody's satisfaction. The Moonlight Parking Lot, for example, a lot of people that come to the Moonlight don't live in Vista and would not have a clue we're, we're in the process of doing this, and I think might, in some cases, unfortunately, it's only a small number of people that still do smoke, but might want to smoke in the parking lot before they come down to the amphitheater where they clearly understand there's no smoking permitted, and that's reinforced through announcements and that sort of thing. But I was hoping you might consider a limit line on the path coming down to the Moonlight where it'd be clearly marked and a receptacle and a sign which says, please, no, no smoking allowed after this point, which would then, in a friendly fashion, get people to comply but not hit them over the head with a...
We can do that. And currently in the amphitheater, smoking is not allowed within the fences of the amphitheater, but it is allowed just outside the fences. So we'd continue that practice, but we can do friendly reminders, nothing, you know...
And what about tobacco products? Say, people who play baseball, for example, there's a, seems to be a tobacco product used there, and...
That would be prohibited, unless, unless the city manager designates that as an area, but right now we're recommending it be prohibited.
Okay, I sort of question whether that, that's going to go over terribly well with our baseball, adult baseball players.
They shouldn't smoke. They're athletes.
Another, another tobacco product that...
I think one, one of the other...
I think they, I think they stick it in their ear. I'm not sure where they put it.
One of the other possible outcomes of, if, if children are exposed to seeing people smoke, it's hoping they won't pick up the habit. I think that's one of the other concerns raised by the Tobacco Control Project. They're trying to set an example for the youth that are out there, that it's, it's better not to engage in that practice.
Okay, it's, it's, some of the people I see in our audience tonight have worked really hard on this, and I appreciate that, and I'm a person who watched his dad at age 56 go through a massive coronary, and the one thing he asked of me, he says, please, learn from my experience, don't smoke, as he attributed that largely to that problem. And we have an asthmatic son who even had to have a tracheotomy because of his breathing problems. So fortunately, we had, his brother was six foot four, and we gently asked people to put it out. But most people don't have that, so it's an education process, and I hope we'll sort of take it gradually and make sure we don't get people angry, so I can support this.
Yesterday, I went to see this exhibit at the Natural History Museum on the body worlds, and they had a lung of a smoker there, and it was not a pretty sight. Mr. Gronky.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I guess just to follow up on Mr. Campbell's questions, when it comes to monitoring, or let's say some groups right now, you talked about areas that are exceptions or exclusions, and where people might have an opportunity to smoke, so we will provide some kind of container there for, for them to...
Correct. One, another possible area, at Bringle, the senior center, in the evening, Alcoholics Anonymous meets there on a regular basis, and when they take their breaks, a lot of them are outside smoking, so we would request the city manager designate an area in the parking lot there somewhere away from the building, and provide the necessary receptacles.
And historically, they've been pretty good about keeping themselves clean.
Yes, yes.
All right, good, good, good. And, and I really agree with this, with the tobacco. Is there some talk about alcohol, too, right? Is that coming forward to this council, restriction on...
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
Not, nothing yet. Okay. Well, I'd like to think that someday we, we take a look at that, too.
We have one, did you want to say something, Mr. Richardson?
Johnson, yeah. I, it's all right. I just wanted to say that alcohol is currently not allowed in the parks.
Okay.
Unless it's a special use permit for an event.
I'm sorry, Patrick. I, you've gotten... One day, okay. We have one speaker from the audience, Cliff Kaiser?
Here. I'm down here, I'd like to speak.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's not working. So raise your hand.
Let him speak.
Please, Mr. Kaiser, then Mr. Lopez will speak.
Cliff Kaiser, 1800 Thibodeau Road, Suite 220 Vista. Just a quick comment on the gentleman's initial report. I'm in favor of the smoking ban, but the, it seems there's a lot of hyperbole in that report saying that secondhand smoke in the open air, or the cigarette butts, toxic stuff getting into the water stream, that's kind of exaggeration, I think, to, to drive a point, to have you vote in one way or the other. In reality, this is about littering, and the propensity of cigarette smokers to litter, and to keep the parks clean.
Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. I, I don't think that the, the smoke, you know, when you're out in the park out there, would, you know, really, secondhand smoking is, is, unless they're right next to them. But, like you said, littering, those butts after 15 years, is, is the wrong thing. I remember years ago in my restaurant, we had to have, when these ordinance first came in, that you had to have one section for non, for smoking, one for non-smoking, and then later it came no smoking at all. So if you ease into things, I think people will, will get the, get the point. And I think if you, like Mr. Campbell said, if you're not real tough with those people and create more of a problem, you know, that, that would be appreciated, and so I agree that, that it's time to back off those cigarettes. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the council? I'm afraid this, the request to speak system is not working, so we'll have to just indicate when you want to speak. The voting is working, but the others not. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, Mayor.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes.
No, thank you.
That's unanimous, and so that now is in effect after 30 days. Okay, that concludes the items on our consent calendar. The next item is discussion item D-1, which is an award of contract for a street resurfacing and maintenance project.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Larry Pierce, the Director of Engineering, and I have with me Ms. Sudhi Soja, which is the Assistant Director, and she'll be making the, oh, excuse me, the presentation on this item tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This street resurfacing and maintenance project will address some major streets from the city's pavement management system plan, and install improvements of asphalt-concrete overlays, concrete curb ramps, replacement of traffic loops, sewer main repairs, and median modifications. This project was added to the CIP list in October 2007. During the design of this project, the ADA standards for wheelchair ramps was changed, and these new changes have been reflected in the construction documents. Advertising of this project was delayed after the design completion, since this project would have qualified as a shovel-ready project for stimulus funding. Sandag Board approved city's share of almost $1.5 million in stimulus exchange funds on July 15th of 2009, and that amount is being used for the construction of this project. City received seven bids on July 28th. At the time, at the time of the bid opening, Vulcan Materials Company seemed to be the lowest bidder. However, review of the bids revealed that correcting the calculations on bidder number three, or Sim J. Harris, would drop their bid to be the lowest. Further review of the bid documents indicated that Sim J. Harris failed to provide the information about their subcontractors as it is required by the state law. Therefore, Vulcan's bid was still the lowest, and their bid also had to be corrected for its arithmetic error. A bid protest was received from Sim J. Harris for time extension to provide the missing required subcontractor information. That could not be granted, and therefore it left Vulcan Materials Company as the lowest bidder. A second bid protest was received from ABC Construction Company, contesting that Vulcan perform at least 50% of the work by its own forces, the type of experience in similar projects, mathematical error in listing of the second-tier subcontractors. City Attorney's Office reviewed each item in detail, provided a response, and recommended award of the project to Vulcan Materials Company. The alternative bid item covers the street resurfacing of Bobier Drive from North Santa Fe Avenue to Lynette Circle, and slurry seal of Marrow's Drive from Hacienda to Copper Drive for $389,594. Adding this amount to the base bid is the total requested amount for award of the contract to Vulcan Materials Company tonight. It is also recommended that per city's municipal code, the city manager be authorized to approve change orders up to 10% of the contract amount. Funds identified in the three CIP projects include several sources, such as the 1.450, $1,457,000 received as part of the stimulus exchange fund. Construction of this project is anticipated to start in November and complete in May of 2010. Similar to Sigamore Overlay Project, construction work will be performed at night, that is to reduce the impact to the traveling public. This concludes my presentation, and we are available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, we have about four people who have requested to speak from the various firms involved. Does the council have any questions before I call on them? Does city attorney have any comments before? Okay. Okay, first, and each of you have, have given, are given a time limit of three minutes. So the first is Randy Finch.
Good evening, council members. My name is Randy Finch. The law firm of Marcus Scalia &amp; Finch, the largest public works construction firm in San Diego. I have the privilege of representing ABC Construction. This bid protest has been documented for the city and the city's lawyers. It's been considered by the city staff. What I'd like to do is focus on what I believe is the biggest issue affecting the construction industry in San Diego, and that is the Green Book specification that the city incorporates into its contract. What it states on an engineering project like the project at issue here is that the contractor shall perform with its own organization, contract work amounting to at least 50% of the contract price. Now, what's happening here is you have a material supplier, a company called Vulcan Material Company, bidding this project as a prime contractor, and they are not going to do any work in the field. They're not going to do anything required by the Green Book, other than supply materials. There's 53 individual discreet line items in this project. All 53 line items are listed by Vulcan as being subcontracted to another firm. It's been set forth in the bid protest why that is a subterfuge of the, the bidding requirements. The largest issue before you is that this Green Book section, there's been letters by lawyers back and forth, has never been considered. The Green Book, unlike statutes, doesn't have any case law that interprets this particular section. Nobody's ever interpreted it. Here we have a material supplier bidding as a prime contractor, saying, well, we're going to provide asphalt and concrete, and somebody else is going to do all the work. Their plant isn't in the City of Vista. Their plant's down the road. The materials are going to be brought in on a truck, and somebody that you're not contracting with would be installing it. We believe that violates a very clear statement, and this is, you know, basic English written by engineers, for how construction projects are going to be conducted in the state of California. And it says, "The contractor shall perform with its own organization, contract work amounting to at least 50% of the contract price." So the question for you, and my client's protest is, what's 50% self-performing? Is it merely supplying materials, or is it actually building the City of Vista's project? On that basis, I request that you reject the bid of Vulcan as non-responsive and award the project to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, ABC Construction, who will actually be building the project for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mike Oppenheimer.
Hello, hi, I'm Mike Oppenheimer. I'm with ABC Construction. I'm an estimator, which I, I bid this project. I've been estimating in this field for about 15 years. We'd like to build your project. We'd like to self, self-perform this project. We have our own rollers, our own pavers, our own loaders, and trucks, and crews. Our certified payrolls will be our employees, not a subcontractor. Because we're self-performing this work, if there's any issues with the work, it can be administered, taken care of, right away. There's not a middleman, there's not someone that says, well, you need to call the general contractor. There's a responsibility to the public out on site to take care of issues, whether it be traffic or whatnot. Simply, we just can't compete with a material supplier that sets a price of material to themselves and simply chooses a contractor as they deem necessary for the project. So basically, it takes that portion away of fair bidding from the city, the material supplier saying, this is the contractor we're going to use. In a nutshell, I request that you reject Vulcan's bid, because it is only a material supplier, and it will not self-perform any of the work, as demonstrated in the bid documents.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheimer. Next is Barbara Gadboy.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I represent an A-licensed general engineering... I represent an A-licensed general engineering contractor, Calmat, doing business as Vulcan Materials. As I said, Vulcan is an A-licensed general engineering contractor. They are not a mere material supplier. I also want to point out that this is a very material-intensive project, and the Green Book definition of work includes the supply of materials. The definition of prime contractor focuses on the legal relationship. Who is the party that's contracting with the city, and who bears the risk of performance? And that's who Vulcan is. They're a -- they've held their license since 1937. They're a national company with assets and bonding, and they're fully capable of performing this work as a prime contractor. There's nothing anti-competitive about the method of project delivery that Vulcan has chosen for this project. They've chosen a streamlined method of bidding. It differs somewhat from the second-low bidder, ABC. But that is in consequence, the only thing that ABC has identified is harm to them, and that's not what competitive bidding rules are about. They're about getting the best value for the public entity. And in this case, Vulcan, as the low bidder, has done that, and there isn't any basis to not move forward with the award to Vulcan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Dane DeForest.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Dane DeForest. I represent Vulcan Materials Company as an area manager for them, and been with the company for 17 years. I just wanted to say, we're excited and prepared to come onboard and do the work and perform this project for the city. We are currently actively involved in a couple of projects with Caltrans right now. One up near Idowild, which is 75 to 80 percent complete. One which is just getting started off down in Mission Valley area right now on Highway 8. We've also been pre-qualified with the city of San Diego to a very large degree on bidding for them, and we're just excited to be here and ready to perform for you, and we'll move onsite as soon as you give us the go-ahead. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does Council have any questions of any of these that please, Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. Question to the attorney. As a charter city, as a general law city, we always have to take the lowest bid, correct? As a general law city?
Yes.
And as a charter city, we have the right to take whoever, whether it's a little higher or a little lower?
We do as a general proposition, but since this was advertised as a low-bid contract, we are obligated in this case to take the low bid. Obviously, the very lowest bid, there was a problem with it that could not be cured. This is the second-low bid, and per the terms of our solicitation for bids, we're obligated to take the low bid unless there, again, is a defect to be found in the second-low bid. And the view of our office is that the second-low bid is both responsive and responsible.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Could the gentleman that represents Vulcan, please come back up?
Mr. DeForest?
While you're coming up, Mr. DeForest, the question was raised by the attorney for another company that you're supplying materials. Do you have any direct supervision involved in the field work?
We will have supervision.
So we'll be assured of the quality?
Yes. And obviously, we ultimately take responsibility too, as the general contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions by the City Council? Okay, what's your pleasure?
I would move to staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there are no further questions, please cast your votes. Okay, the recommendation of the staff to award to Vulcan has been approved, five to one. Okay, we'll go on to the next item, which is Public Hearing Number One, which is an amendment to specific Plan Number 26, Regency Centers is the applicant. Mr. Conley?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The request is for an amendment to specific plan, the downtown specific plan submitted by Regency Centers. The existing specific plan was adopted in 1986, covers a downtown area in the South Santa Fe area, has been amended several times. In 1999, an amendment was added that includes the theater area where the Krikorian Theater is, and the retail and restaurants that were developed by Regency Centers, also known as Vista Village. This amendment added the commercial village designations CV1 through 3, which are referred to as subzones in the specific plan. The area in question is CV1, which is shown in red here on the screen, includes the theater and all the retail shops fronting Main Street down to the Wave Water Park. The request is for an amendment to the CV1 subzone to allow up to 2,500 square feet of medical office space. The CV1 area currently allows only retail and restaurant uses. Regency has requested to permit a total of 2,500 square feet of medical space, which is further defined as a dentist or optometrist within the amendment that's been submitted. There's a total square footage of 129,009 square feet within this subzone, and so the amendment for 2,500 square feet equates to approximately 2 percent of that total area. The Planning Commission reviewed this request on September 1st and voted 6-0 in favor of the request, and the Regency representatives have also met with the Vista Village Business Association's Executive Director, who also supports their request. And with that, staff is recommending approval of an amendment to the specific plan to allow the medical office space as proposed. Thank you.
Okay, we have one individual that would like to speak. Is that a question first? Okay.
On your monitor here, you go back. Did the -- does it show that the association, Vista Village Business Association, do they okay that? Are they okay in that? Let's see.
The Vista Village Business Association's Executive Director.
You went through it pretty fast, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Sadowski?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak as well. Greg Sadowski with Regency Centers. I am here on behalf of -- Regency Centers is a general partner of Vista Village. It's the partnership is RRC Vista Village Phase 1 LP. And I think that John spoke of our request, and we made an appearance before the Planning Commission as well, to get an amendment to our specific plan. Currently, the specific plan in this location only allows for retail and restaurants only. And as you know, in the retail environment, which is in evolution, is always changing as your Main Street has changed and all of Vista has changed. We have evaluated different opportunities to add what we call retail medical uses. We had a optometrist in here at one time, which did close. We'd like to pursue another optometrist, which we are doing. In that vein, which is typical in retail centers, we're looking to add a dentist, and that is our request. With that, we have been pretty methodical in the evolution of looking at this. We went out to the market and looked at ways to add and bring new customers in to share the parking. There's different hours that the retail environment moves and ebbs and flows. You've got the theater there that brings a lot during the evening hours and the weekend evening hours, and so we're looking to increase the traffic flow during the daytime. With that, you bring in some, we call optometrists. We'd like to find some more of the office uses that are what we call, once again, retail office and services. And a dentist would fit in that category to increase that daytime traffic. With that, that would help the other tenants in the shopping center. If you've been by there lately, you can see we've lost a few retail tenants, restaurants and retailers, and so we are trying to adapt to the marketplace in here. The one constant thing that we all know in the retail industry, and even maybe in life, is change. And with that, we want to be on the forefront, and we are here today to request an amendment to add one dentist. I think the more important note is, we are not looking to make this a medical venue. These two types of tenants can be found in all shopping centers across, I want to say, the world. They are not clinics. They are not what I'm going to call general practitioners. This is what we call retail medical. And if I can answer any questions, I'm more than happy to.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, do you have questions?
I do indeed, thank you. Typically, dental offices close at 5:00. They sometimes are open early, which works because of your parking situation, but generally, there's a portion of the week that they're not open, which leaves lights off or just an empty spot, which is often weekends and one day, other day of the week. At least, that's what I see in typical practice. I also would suggest to my councilmates that this is, that there's a lot of dentists in Vista, and they're well distributed. There's, the community is well-served by dentists, and many have been here for years and years. Optometry seems to be a category that's not a lot of, and optometrists often have other things that are optical in nature, binoculars, other things that people could use. Are you contemplating laser Lasik procedures in addition to just straight optometry?
We have not contemplated that at all.
So you're looking at that, okay. I certainly support optometry, and I think that's a good adjunct here. Centered by, I would have to vote no on dentist. I just don't think it fits. And certainly, if you had a large center with, you had, say, 100 tenants, then fine. It's not a problem there. But you have a small center, and I think it needs to be dynamic, and it needs to be open and functioning even in the evening hours to the best of its ability.
Okay, Mr. Grunkie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. About 2,500 square feet constitutes how many offices? How many different doctors would be in there? Just one or more?
The one space we're looking at is 1,700 square feet, so it'd be one space.
Okay, so, and that, so the amount of foot traffic would be conducive to how many people they could see within an hour, then?
Correct.
So it's not really producing a lot of foot traffic as opposed to a retail outlet or a restaurant?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And so you, your idea is to have a long-term lease with some type of dental service. To me, this is just a kind of a short-term problem. You know, we're facing a recession right now. There is a downturn in the market right now for restaurants and retail, but I think that will turn around. So how long of a lease would you have with this service?
Typically, it would be a five-year, five-year option. I think the better question is that if you go into malls, you see smile care centers that really are there, the environment's changing, that people don't just go to the dentist to get their teeth worked on. They go to the dentist to have them whitened, and it's more, it's a different environment. Just as Councilman Campbell was saying, laser surgery or Lasik, where you go to the optometrist. You used to just go in there, and they'd look at your eyes, and you'd get a pair of glasses. It's changed, that the environment out there is changing. And dentists are in retail environments for the reason they do want to be in and out. They don't like to be necessarily in office buildings because their customers want to typically come in and out. It's a different environment. And with the downturn in the economy, I think we're looking to adapt and re-merchandise centers. And as you've seen in Vista, across Vista, they're being re-merchandised. Some spaces that were retail maybe are going to office or changing to churches. You have big boxes that change. And I won't say it's a short-term or long-term. If I knew that, I might not be here right now. I understand what the economy is going to do. I think my request is to make a downtown Main Street environment, which this runs into the Vista Village Business Associations area across the street. And I think that it's just adapting to the environment, and I would look for the request to do that, and I hope that we can get more tenants in there. But right now, we are losing more tenants at this date, and we're trying to stop some of this. And so I think that leasing new spaces to tenants will bring in additional tenants.
That might be. The question still lies in the fact of the nature of the business. You know, the whole center is supposed to be an entertainment center, and in so, I don't think the dental fits into that theme. So I'm going to probably not agree with this one.
Mrs. Ritter?
I'm kind of having the same problem. I want to help you, but in the historical downtown, and I was just thinking about, they have, there's a dentist, there's an orthodontist, there's a real estate company, there's a wellness center. You know, it all has kind of gone towards services, and we really need the retail, and you know, your center, I want it to be a vibrant retail center. And so to open that up again to more services, I just have a problem with that. I actually think it was a mistake in the historical downtown to add that many service people. You know, I mean, I know we need service providers, and we're looking at putting condos, that demonstration project on the dirt lot there in the corner, which means if there's condos there, then people will be moving around and wanting services down there. But I just, because there's so many in the historical downtown, I just hesitate to open it up again to more over in the Krikorian Center, because I think that then the whole place is going to turn into services. So anyway, so I have the same problem. I don't have a problem with an ophthalmologist, or, but I, just the dentist office, just, it bothered me because it only maybe one or two people would be in there and out, and I don't see them as a retail thing. So anyway, that's still bothering me, so.
Are you an optometrist, not ophthalmologist?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. How much sales tax will we receive of a rental like that? Mr. Conley?
I don't think you receive --
Is there any sales tax at all?
No, I don't believe there is any.
Not at all. In the historical downtown, I've heard often that you have one of the nicest buildings in the downtown area, historical building, that is a dentist office. And yes, they do, people maybe go out of there, go out and have lunch occasionally, and, but here you have a huge building like that, which should be bringing in sales tax in that downtown. But also, the times are different right now, and there's some empty buildings right now down there. Is there a possibility that for a short period of time, you would allow that if we okayed it?
I'm sorry, what is the question?
How long a lease would you?
I could probably talk to, we have a dentist who we have, are working with, and I can chat with him about that to see what his --
Dentist, no, I'm sorry, but, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what you asked me.
Okay, now, dentist, no, we have plenty of those in Vista. So I would, you know, I hate to see empty buildings, but another dentist, no, not down there. And your downtown is more for the entertainment, I feel, and if it's dentist, no, I'm sorry. No. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Well, I, sales tax was a question, and I think that's been answered. I would suggest two things. One is if you include this in a modification of the specific plan, you're going to live with it forever.
Yeah.
The second is that dentists take, it's really highly capital-intensive to make the modifications to a suite to accommodate a dentist, because I've worked with several in a property I'm involved in, and I have no interest in one way or the other whether you, for that reason. But I would just simply suggest that we live with a dentist or something like that for a long, long time, and I just don't think it's what we want in that smaller village. I wish you had a larger set of properties. Maybe if you built a parking structure, I'd be supporting two dentists.
Okay, I guess I'm the only one that feels differently. I, when we originally contemplated having redevelopment and commercial centers in the city of Vista way back when, we had two rather large power centers on either end of the city with Costco on one and Walmart on the other. And the economic strategy was, is that the downtown would be a service area for the people who live here in Vista. And I'm afraid that, you know, some of that has to be dental, some of it has to be optometry, some of it has to be something else. But I see nothing wrong with having a dentist mixed in with the other services that people here in Vista need to have. And we have an entertainment center there, that's true. That's a portion of it, but this council approved a real estate agency down there in the middle of the downtown, I mean, on this center. I think if you're going to have real estate, you might as well have a dentist.
I think Judy might know about that.
Pardon? I can't imagine who voted for that, but anyhow, I'm in favor. Let's everyone cast their votes, unless there's any further questions. Let's everyone cast their votes, unless there's any further questions.
Well, what's the one?
Well, I guess we have to have a motion, don't we? Yeah, I'm sorry. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would gladly make a motion, Mayor, and that would be to allow the modification to specific Plan 26 excluding dentists.
So that would allow only for optometrists?
It'd allow optometry.
Only.
Is there a second?
There's a second on that.
Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, that passes with Vance and Gronky voting no.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is public hearing number two. You did close the public hearing on that, didn't you, Mr. Campbell?
I certainly did, sir.
Okay. The next public hearing is public hearing number two, which is an amendment to the historic preservation ordinance. And Mr. Conley.
This is a proposed amendment to our historic preservation ordinance, Chapter 1512 of our development code. The existing historic preservation ordinance was adopted after the historic preservation, and I'm sorry, a historic preservation commission was formed in 1989 after there was an ad hoc committee formed to review historic resources for the city of Vista. At that time, a historic resource inventory was completed, which identified 22 properties in Vista that were potentially eligible for listing as historic properties as a local designation. Unfortunately, no properties within the city have ever received a local historic designation, primarily as a result of the existing ordinance. There are two properties that are currently designated nationally in the National Register of Historic Places. One is at 790 Vale View, which is known as the Braun House, and is shown in the overhead picture on the right. The other is at 2040 North Santa Fe, which is also known as Iguomia Adobe, and operated by the county as a public park facility. The proposed revisions of the historic preservation ordinance would primarily allow us for Mills Act agreement. Mills Act is a state law that allows for property tax relief for property owners that agree to maintain their property under current historic standards. The property tax incentives allow for the assessor's office to reduce their property taxes at a certain percentage depending upon a number of factors. Essentially, once the property owner agrees to the historic designation, they go through the process, they go to the commission. If it's approved, the county tax assessors does the math to determine what the property tax relief can be, but it can sometimes be up to 50% or more of what their current property taxes are. So it is a somewhat significant benefit for property owners that would like to go through the process. The proposed change is also eliminate the historic preservation commission. Since we haven't had a historic preservation commission in almost 20 years, it would make sense to eliminate that commission in favor of the planning commission, which would take over those duties. And it also aligns the current ordinance with our state law and makes it consistent. The planning commission also reviewed this proposal on September 1st and voted 6-0 in favor of the amendment. There was one commissioner absent. And they recommended, as part of that approval, that the city consider designating all of our city-owned resources that could be historically designated as qualifying for historic properties and go through the designation process. The fiscal impact from this proposal, we don't believe is going to be very great. Property tax relief under the Mills Act is estimated to result in less than a $1,000 loss in property tax annually for the city for each individual property. I spoke to a number of cities on this issue, some of which have dozens of historic properties. Those in the coastal areas that have very high property values saw greater reduction in property tax because of the value of those properties. Those in some of the inland areas, one example is Escondido, said that on average, your typical loss is somewhere in the range of $300 to $500 per property on an annual basis, dependent upon the value of the property. It's not all city property tax that's taken, there's a chunk of property tax taken, and that's school districts affected, the cities affected, all of the agencies are affected that receive property tax benefits. So the city is not the only affected property tax beneficiary. Staff has also discussed this matter with two interested private property owners, which we believe will apply for designations. However, also, based on discussions with other cities, we don't anticipate that there'll be a high number of these types of applications coming in, just primarily based on the number of such resources in the city, the cost of the application, and the process itself. We expect a few a year on average. And with that, staff recommends approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 1512 of the Development Code regarding historic preservation, and that completes my presentation.
Didn't you mention in the staff report that maybe at the most, it'd be affect us to $200 or $300 in property taxes?
That's correct. That's what we estimate, but it's, of course, an estimate, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We have one individual that would like to speak in the public hearing, and that would be Jack Laramo. Jack? Jack's representing the Vista Historical Society.
Yes, my name is Jack Laramo, and I'm the director of the Vista Historical Museum and in support of the ordinance. It's been my experience that unless there's an economic incentive, historical properties are allowed to deteriorate, which has happened to some of those on the original list. Use of the Mills Act will, I believe, would act as a good incentive, at least some incentive, to have people, especially for property that's undergoing development or thought of being undergoing development, to retain the historic building. And I'm, with society, be happy to assist in any way to, in implementing the ordinance as our abilities allow.
So you're in favor of us adopting this, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. Mr. Conley, do you know by any chance, or is there any record of how many historical buildings we actually have in the city of Vista who are registered, you know, through the state or whichever way they do it?
We have two that are designated nationally, which I covered before, that's the Iguomia Adobe and the Braun House. There are no others that are designated.
Do you have any kind of idea of how many are in this city that are older? What determines for their historical, how many years, how old do they have to be?
It's not a year thing, per se. It's, there's certain criteria that they have to meet. Do they present an example of some significant event in the history of Vista? Do they provide some significant architectural features? Is there some famous person or historical, you know, significant person that resided in? There are a number of different criteria that those structures are evaluated under, those are listed in the ordinance. As far as the number of structures in the city that could qualify, the survey that they did back in 1989 identified 22 properties. I'm guessing there's probably twice that number. There's a number of single-family residences around the city that could qualify. 50 years is typically the range, the window in which they look to see if it would qualify as a historic structure, so if it's 50 years or older, and there's quite a few structures in the city that are 50 years or older. But as far as the number that would actually go through this designation process, I don't estimate that it's going to be a high number.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Gronky.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. First of all, you know, I walk when I campaign, I go out and walk the communities and so forth. And I can recall back in 2004, talking to someone in the other side of the freeway, Mr. West, he had a beautiful site there. And I brought, he brought this up, and I recall going to the city manager that time with the request of why don't we designate as a historical site, and she kind of fufuted. What happened? What changed?
I spoke to Mr. West, and I agreed to process a change to the historic preservation ordinance.
Okay.
And really, it's an issue that Mr. Laramo spoke of, it's providing financial incentives to people who are interested in doing it. And we feel that we'll have much more success getting people to agree to go through the designation process if we provide some incentive. I think at the time that you spoke to Ms. Geldert, there was very little staff resources available to do that, and we now have some time to work on it.
Okay. And in my discussion with Mr. West, I recall that was, he was concerned that by having this designation, that it might be an available for public access. He was fearful that, you know, kids would be taking field trips through his property. Is that a consideration?
That is a consideration under the Mills Act. You do have to provide public access. The whole purpose of the Mills Act is to preserve the resource, but also allow public access so that the public can enjoy it and, you know, acknowledge it for its historical value. So the process is that there's an agreement that he has to sign into with the city that will define how he's going to maintain a structure and what kind of access he's going to provide. And so he'll have to go through the approval process, and we'll have to work through those issues with him.
I can see the school district saying, well, you took some of my money, why don't we get a little something in return for it?
The issue there is that the property owner really has the ability to control that and define the terms of that public access, so as long as he's open to allowing it at some terms or under some terms, he shouldn't, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. And so obviously, Mr. West is receptive to that.
Mr. West is very interested in this amendment and has agreed to go through the process.
You know, let's talk about the broader issue, because we're talking about opening this up for the entire city, and I can think of a number of adobes, adobe buildings. Does that automatically, do they automatically fit into the criteria for a historical building?
If they're adobe, they probably qualify, but there's a number of issues. As Mr. Laramo pointed out, a lot of those structures have been modified over time, so it would be dependent upon how well the integrity of those structures has been maintained, and those are all evaluated on a case-by-case basis as part of the application process.
So you can make some alterations to the existing building and still have the historical designation?
It's possible, as long as the alterations meet the historical standards.
Okay. And is there a limit to the number of buildings we might have within our city?
No.
So once we establish this ordinance, then anybody can come to our door and say, oh, I think I have a historical building? It has to, our staff has to go out there and evaluate that?
Well, the city has the discretion to approve or deny any of those agreements or those designations. They are, you know, discretionary approvals that are granted by the planning commission.
Okay. And so probably initially, our staff will have the burden of going out and checking out a number of these establishments until finally we reach our maximum...
Depending on how many apply. The cities that I've spoken to that have instituted this type of thing, they usually have a few, you know, that apply upfront, five or 10 that apply in the first two years, and then it's maybe one or two a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Conley, my wife has suggested I should be designated an ancient structure. I hate to resemble that. I have a question. Some cities, I believe, when properties change hands, first off, the designation would apply to the historic houses as designated here, but at the point of changing hands, there's an obligation to upgrade the property to better code standards and make sure the preservation, like in adobe, is drainage and all is set into place as a contingency or lose the tax advantage. You can't just sell and go into a deteriorated property as the second owner and maintain the tax advantage. Plus, there's an obligation, is there not, to keep the building physically there for some period of time?
That's correct. The agreement runs with the property, so if the property changes hands, the new owner is responsible for undertaking that agreement. And the agreement outlines all of the responsibilities of the owner to maintain or improve the structure. Typically, these agreements include a schedule to make certain improvements, not just maintain it in a certain fashion. And so those obligations move on to the next property owner. It's a 10-year window that the Mills Act agreements are valid for, and if the property owner wants to cancel that agreement, it doesn't just cancel automatically, it goes back, it's canceled 10 years from the date that they request it. So if it goes 10 years, and on the ninth year, they request that it be canceled, it has to run another 10 years, and the property tax builds from that, during that 10-year period back to where it would be, so that it's not an automatic increase all the way back to where you were before.
Okay, and this is recorded, then, on the deed?
That's correct.
Okay, so it goes with the land?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ritter.
Along that line, so if it's, if a subsequent owner wanted to cancel it, then would they, could they just, if they didn't want to keep the integrity, could they just do whatever they wanted to do, and then it would just be canceled? Was it just, that just affect the property tax, or that still affect the appearance of the building?
It could potentially affect both. They have an...
Is it fined by someone for it, or?
There are penalties under the code, I'll have to look at what those are. There are monetary penalties if the city wanted to take it to that degree. It's like a code violation, essentially.
It's like a code violation? Oh, okay. I checked in this a long time ago, because I had owned a building, and it was, we considered it, but it was difficult to rehab it, or, you know, like, they wanted the original facade on it, and it was very difficult to keep that and to keep it up, so I didn't consider it. But the other problem I have here is the planning commission recommended designation of all city-owned sites that qualify as historic properties, and I would want to take that in an individual approval process. They could designate this building, if we own this building, this could be a historic building. No, I know you're saying no, but, I mean, I would think we would take it, maybe would come to us as a council on a one-on-one basis, because maybe there's something that we wouldn't want to designate as historical, I don't know.
The city has the choice to designate any of the structures that they want to or none, if they want to. That was simply a recommendation by the planning commission.
So it would come to us?
Each one would have to come individually, it wouldn't be an automatic thing.
When we vote on this, it doesn't automatically make everything...
Absolutely not.
...historical, okay.
Mr. Lopez.
Thank you. In San Marcos, the historic buildings, and San Marcos, it's in the historic buildings, they have some buildings that they've actually moved into their park area because they believe in historical buildings, and, which is a good thing. And I think that Vista, we don't have a lot of them, and so it's important that we, you know, the people who do want it, you know, who buy them as historical and who would like to keep them, should, we should be able to have this Mills Act where, sure, it's costing to maintain these buildings and give them a small relief on the taxes. And it's not like there's a lot of buildings here in this community. And to clarify for Mr. Gronky, I brought this a year ago to Rita, because Mr. West asked about it, and so, and it's taken us almost a year, is that correct, John?
That's correct.
Correct, almost a year to get it to this point, because it's just, it takes time, I guess. And so I think that, especially this particular building, and we're not talking about, this is not just for this building, it's for the entire community. And I think this particular building is a very nice-looking building, and I hope Mr. West, after all this, does register this as a historical building. So good luck, Mr. West, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing and whatever?
I made that motion, but I thought you were going to continue. You sounded like you were going to. So I'll make the motion to close the public hearing and move staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously, and that concludes the public hearing. We'll next go to oral communications. First, we have Kathy, Kanane? Kanane? I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilpersons. My name is Kathy Kanane, I'm the owner of Kanane Events, and our office is located at 800 Grand Avenue in Carlsbad. Is this up? I met with Cliff Kaiser of your chamber in April of this year, and we discussed the potential for having an event created in Vista that would help drive traffic in downtown and do a lot of different things. I proposed to him that we revive the Strawberry Festival 5K and bring it back to downtown Vista. The proposed date that we've come up with is Sunday of Memorial Day weekend in 2010. We'd like to have a 5K run walk in a series of kids' races in the downtown area. Where expected attendance for the 5K will run between 3,000 and 5,000 attendees, which will hopefully double or triple the attendance of what was your chocolate festival, that we are now trying to rename the Strawberry Festival. Our goal is to benefit the Vista Chamber, the Vista Village Business Association, and additional Vista charities as a part of this, what will be a very large promotion for the city of Vista. This slide outlines our goals. We'd like to create an event which gives Vista an opportunity for positive national publicity. You'll notice a little article from the Wall Street Journal on the right-hand side. We produced the Dana Point Turkey Trot for five years and ended up on the front page of the Wall Street Journal one day, and probably don't read about Dana Point on the front page of the Wall Street Journal very often, so we're very proud of that. We'd like to create an event which acts as an incentive for a healthy, active lifestyle, which would positively impact healthcare costs for employers and families of Vista. As we know, this is a very hot issue. I did a study in 1992 on one of the Fortune 500 companies in San Diego, and we found a 30% savings in healthcare costs with a simple walking, jogging, stretching program. We'd like to provide an event which can act as an effective fundraiser for local groups. We're proposing a $5... We're proposing a $5 per entry, which will go to the local charities as they bring in those entries. And there will be other incentive programs that we can help to get them to raise more money for each of their individual charities. We've done this very successfully all over Southern California over the past 15 years. We'd also like to create an event which attracts vacationers to Vista for the holiday weekend. We'd like to promote the Wave, the Moonlight, and your Kites Over Vista, which I just really love a lot. And it's very under-promoted, I might note. In addition to those other goals, we'd like to create an event which attracts potential business owners who will open successful businesses in Vista. We used to produce the Tour de North County in the late '80s. And if you look at your businesses in the business park, you have quite a few cycling-affiliated and sports-affiliated businesses in Vista. And I'd like to say a few of them probably saw that open land while they were riding their bikes through the area. We'd like to create an event which is affordable for all residents of Vista to participate. Our entry fees will run between $20 and $35, which is very reasonable considering they'll be getting t-shirts and food and entertainment. My list right now has approximately 4,000 runners that live in Vista, Carlsbad, and Oceanside, and there is no large running event right now hosted in Vista. And we have the unique opportunity of having the Wave and the Kites and a lot of elements that I think would draw attendance. In addition to our event on Event Day, hopefully, the city will get increased tax, sales tax, from visitors who return to shop, including myself. You know, we come to the Coquian Theater area and visit, you know, California Pizza Kitchen, Panera, Chipotle, and they do a lot of events with us in other areas of Southern California. So we're very optimistic about that. I apologize for so much on that slide, but up in the right-hand corner is the Orange County Race for the Cure, which we did for 15 years after I left your Strawberry Festival. It was the 10th largest running event in the country over those 15 years, and it netted 2.8 million the last year that I did it. We do the Surf City Marathon right now in Huntington Beach, which is currently the second-largest marathon in California. And I might note that despite that, we have an economic downfall, that event is running at 120% registration to date right now, which is fantastic, and we're very happy about it.
Excuse me. Your time is up. Does the council want to continue this?
Do you mind?
Okay.
Is that right?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize. In addition, we started the Oceanside Turkey Trot three years ago, and it's grown almost 5,000 attendees in three years, and it's the largest, fastest-growing running event in San Diego County. This next slide just kind of outlines some of the national media that we've attracted with our events, and hopefully, we can do the same thing here in Vista. One of the things that you probably don't know about running is that it attracts a very high-end demographic household. It is very closely related to golf. The good news is you only have about 100 to 150 golfers on the golf course, and I'm going to bring thousands of runners. And hopefully, they'll move here to Vista or at least buy a few things while they're Again, the Turkey Trot is an example of the ability that we have to draw both locally and nationally and regionally. The Oceanside Turkey Trot brings in 50% of its participants from the city of Oceanside. And then you can see it draws quite nicely regionally and from outside the area. This is just a little overview of the one that we did in '92 and '93. We had about 1,700 participants, and at the time, I thought that wasn't worth doing. Now I think that if we can get 2,500 to 3,000 participants the first year, it'll certainly be worth doing. This is a map of the course. I'm glad that this gentleman from the Regency Center would like to have some other use of his parking lots. I can provide that early in a Sunday morning. I'm glad that parking lot's there because that was one of the limiting factors back in the '90s. As you can see, we can showcase downtown and Eucalyptus and some very nice areas of Vista. And we will have the event. We'll have a 5K, some kids' runs, and then we'll have live entertainment. And we'll incorporate the chocolate festival, strawberry festival, and the kite element into the event. What we'd like to ask the city for is financial support in covering sheriff's fees, traffic closure fees, traffic plans, to work as a team with us on public relations efforts, co-promoting the city and the businesses of Vista with this event. In addition, we'd like to get use of the street banners and have the city provide street closure notification signs. I'm estimating these costs are approximately $15,000 per year, and we've requested a three-year to get the event off the ground. That might seem like a lot of money, but it takes a big effort to get events of that size. And we need to market and promote it and make it feel like it is a great event to bring people here to the city. Thank you very much for your time.
I think this sounds like a marvelous idea. However, this is under oral communications, and the council can't take any action. So I suggest this be placed on our next agenda.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, Cliff Kaiser.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Cliff Kaiser, the Vista Chamber of Commerce Chairman of the Board. And I'd like to amplify some of Kathy Kanane's comments and give a little more background. The Chamber has been exploring a sporting or running event for the last four or five years, trying to determine what would be the best venue and how to organize such an event. We've solicited several other event organizers. We've even explored the possibility of managing this event internally with Chamber staff and discovered that Kanane Events here locally had produced the Strawberry Festival in the past and very energetic, and we're very encouraged and engaged them to help us promote and execute this event. This event is going to depend, to a large extent, on some significant sponsors for us to execute, as well as some significant efforts on the Chamber and the staff to promote it. One of our hopes is to, in running this, the morning of our annual street fair, our annual spring street fair, which in the last two or three years has been called the Chocolate Fest, is to also expand that event. Traditionally, we've had 120 to 130 exhibitors there, and we think with the right promotion and the fact that we're going to bring another 3,000 people, plus their spouses and kids, into the city, that we'll get more exhibitors, another 20, 30 exhibitors, just for that reason, knowing that there's going to be a larger attendance there, plus a health and wellness pavilion or a health and wellness expo as part of that, just directly related to the running, drawing another 15, 20, or 30 exhibitors. So the street fair itself, the expansion of it, in which we partner with the, of course, the city and the Vista Village Business Association, we're hoping that these combined events will make this an even stronger day for people to come to the city of Vista. As you know, the Chamber has a recent history, a long history, but in recent history, of putting some successful business and community events together. Recently, we had a tremendous golf tournament here at Cheddar Ridge Country Club, the Taste of Vista on Main Street in the summertime, in the springtime. Our annual business expo has been very successful the last several years, including some excellent plans for the one that's coming up here, October 21st. And of course, the street fair each year's in the last couple of years has been very strong. So the -- what I'm trying to say here is the Chamber is very active in planning these business and community events, and this is a new one that we'd like to kick off starting this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sounds good.
Mayor, City Council, Chuck Raible, 21 Crescent Drive. It's been a while. You haven't been doing too much heavy lifting. I'll keep my comments short. First of all, Jack Larimer failed to mention, and I know he wanted to, the grand opening of the Vista Historical Society at 11 o'clock on this Thursday in their new location, which is a historical building, I would think. Second of all, on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, I thought they'd be here today, I'd like to extend the kudos to the Lions Club that you did earlier. They did a golf tournament last month very successfully. And last, I learned a month ago or so in the newspaper that Vista, through the mayor, decided that Vista doesn't support the NRG replacement plans of any kind for the current power plant over in Carlsbad. A bit surprised that there was no public dialogue, and there was no -- in my mind, you folks speak for the people of Vista, and it's not the way to do business. And anyway, you've been chastised, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your time tonight.
I have? Was that by you?
Yes.
I feel the chastisement. Very good. That concludes our council meeting for this evening, except for remarks. We'll ask the city attorney to please offer any remarks he might have.
I have nothing special for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing to comment on, thanks.
Gronky?
Just one thing, Mayor. You know, it's not a good news, and I want to continue along that vein. Any realtor will tell you that when you have good schools within your community, you're going to have higher values for your homes. And I have before me a list of how Vista Unified has participated in California State testing and improved just across the board. I do want to share a couple of scores with you. Keep in mind, this is on a 1,000-point basis, and anybody that gets near above or 800 and near 900 is almost exceptional. We've seen Olive Elementary go up 42 points out of that 1,000-point scale. Rancho Minerva, 29 points. We have a number of schools that are well above 800, some approaching 900. So I just think it speaks volumes for where we're going as a city, and I think it's already going to show some improvement in our city.
Mrs. Ritter.
The other thing I would mention, Rancho Minerva's Thursday, but I think this is televised on Friday. So -- but I was going to say, isn't Sunday the anniversary for the Rancho Buena Vista? Isn't that this Sunday?
Yes.
From 1 to -- I want to say from 1 to 4, but somebody check that out before they go over there. I don't have the time.
Okay. Mr. Campbell.
If I may, I'd like to -- I know I'm probably off-topic, but I'd like to comment on Ms. Kanane and her professionalism in doing these kinds of events. I know, as Economic Development Director, I worked with her on a prior event, and the only thing I'd recommend is you don't drive with her. But I would like to see her being able to organize the event. She didn't kill me, but we tried. It's a good thing for Vista. I hope Mr. Hamm sitting in the back there will pitch in on this. And I'd like to suggest that with your efforts in talking to North County Transit, you might get some special Sprinter trains running that day to bring people in from east-west to the event. If I can make a comment, please. Yesterday, I was with Sand Egg in Los Angeles on a South, Southern California event called Mobility 21. There were 700 in attendance. We were talking about the future of transportation and transit within the region. The keynote speaker was from editor from Forbes, who's put out a book called $20 Gas. And the book is very interesting. It has chapters on $4 gas, $6 gas, $8 gas, $10 gas, and what happens to our economy. And the one message I really came away with for Vista is that working on the downtown for mixed-use development is an outstanding idea, particularly along South Santa Fe, where people can actually start to use public transit. Because as it gets towards $6 a gallon, they won't be wanting to drive their car much further than that. When it gets to $10, then people will be moving out of the suburbs, back into the cities, and trying to maintain a quality of life in a difficult time. And I'd like to wish the mayor a happy birthday.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Lopez.
Years ago, I think there was an effort made to have a bike -- what do you call it?
Bike race?
Yeah, bike race here years ago when I was on the VVA. And it's a shame that it kind of fell apart, you know? And I think that the only thing that I see that'll be wrong is that you're going to have so many people here, and we might not have the parking. So I think the rail would be a great asset to this because it's going to start right there at the Coquian. And it actually, if you have 4,000, 5,000 people coming here, plus all the spectators, where are we going to put them? You know? So it's a good thing, you know? And I'm not suggesting that on the money part of it here. I'm just saying that I think the Chamber has a good one at this time, and I wish you luck on it because I'm in support of an event like that. Thank you.
Very good. The Rancho Fall Festival, I just handed a note, is this Sunday, September 27th, from 1 to 3.
1 to 3.
Okay. I think that pretty well does it for this evening, so we're now adjourned. Thank you very much.